All right, well, we're gonna get started with Turkey Foot.
I am glad to be here. Thrilled to be the principal at Turkey Foot Middle School and so happy to work in a district like Kenton County. We get so much support from our central office. You know, you can call Melina, you can call Barb, Terry, anybody, and you get some help. And we have great consultants to boot. We appreciate that from you guys, because I know that you support that as well. We have some good news at Turkey Foot to share. My hard-working staff and students did a great job last year, and because of that, we've received a rating of distinguished. I think it's the first time we've ever been distinguished and not proficient, which is great, we've always been proficient, but distinguished felt a little good. So, people were happy about that, and we were celebrating. We moved from the 65th percentile to the 92nd percentile in the state, so that's pretty awesome. We saw a reduction of novice in reading, our overall writing scores improved, and our percentage of proficient distinguished increased significantly in math. For the novice in reduction, I think one of the things that helped us the most really was MAP, being able to have that access to MAP data so that we could place kids appropriately. We added some Read 180 classes last year, and E21, and a modified springboard class, and we think that really helped with those lower kids. We also developed some universal reading strategies that were used in all content classes, and also in our RTI classroom. For our writing, I think there were two things that really helped us. Specific writing strategies that the language arts teachers developed that were used in social studies and science, as well as the ELA classes, and having all of our teachers, social studies, science, and language teachers participate in the LDC modules. That really helped us tremendously. And our increase in writing was 67.5 to 79.5. Those are overall scores, so we're pretty excited about that. On the increase of proficient distinguished in math, you guys got a report that had wrong information on it, so I want to clarify what that was. It said something different. The percentages were 49.8% of our students were proficient or distinguished, and that went up to 60.4. I don't know where the number came from that's in your packet, I can't... Do you have that one? Okay, good, good. We had a significant increase in the percentage of students scoring proficient distinguished in math, and I, again, contribute that to the grouping of students by their RIT scores. So, there again, MAP, I think, really helped us a lot by being able to place kids where they could get the most from the instruction that was going on in the classroom. They were able to focus on those specific needs, and I will say that, generally speaking, for the majority of our math teachers, they are using springboard with fidelity, and really, it makes such a difference. I can, for a teacher who may not want to embrace everything, if I show them the scores of those teachers who do it totally and completely with fidelity, they can see right away that there's a big difference. So, I think that's really, really good for us. Overall, I think one of, again, I think MAP data, having MAP data to share all the time has kind of helped us have a fluid system, so that when we did our RTI periods of time, we can move kids around based on what we were seeing in that data. So, I really do appreciate the fact that we've been able to do that. I think our school culture is constantly improving. We spend a lot of time working with kids on expectations and having them understand what we want. We review that, reviewed that a lot last year, to keep them up on what that was supposed to look like. This year, we changed around our RTI a bit. We have a dedicated class period for RTI. Rather than a half an hour for everybody in the building, we actually have an hour set aside for those kids who really show deficits and need that support. We think that's gonna be a better fit for our lower kids. This provides time for RTI, for Read 180 students to do their computer time, which we know is a big part of that program, allows for some direct math instruction in identified areas, and provides time for those students with disabilities to spend time with their special ed teacher. And as we get further into this, that will be a big part of what we need to be doing this year. We added four periods of System 44. We have five periods of Read 180 taught by an ELA teacher with a special education teacher in there and an instructional assistant, so those 21 kids are really getting a lot of one-on-one time with someone to help them develop their skills. We provide a stipend for a person in our building to actually take all the data, disaggregate it, get it out to teachers, so they're not spending as much time doing that themselves. They can actually use the data, so that's important for us. And then, this summer, I think it was really exciting for the administrators in the building. The teachers decided that they wanted to come up with a plan to improve classroom management, and so they met this summer. Someone said, "Hey, can we do this?" I'm like, "Yes." So, they came up with a plan themselves, which was really exciting for us, and it's working pretty well, and I think that was something that we needed to do, because last year, one of the problems that we did have with any kind of discipline was within the classroom, so this is helping. They have a plan that they developed, so they own it. It's real important. Based on our new data, there was not really an overall increase in reading this year. I mean, we had some novice reduction, but our students even scoring distinguished were less than last year. So, we've added another reading class to our schedule in an encore class that we think will be of help. She's worked very closely with our consultant to come up with a good program that we think will help kids improve in reading. We are working to make sure our ELA teachers, our science teachers, social studies teachers are participating in the LDC, so that they can continue to build those skills in reading. We've added more rigor to Prep and Prep Plus, particularly Prep Plus. They've added an additional novel. The reading passages and text are a little more complex, so we think that's gonna help with those distinguished kids. And we are providing a specific time for K-Prep-like tests, so we are hoping to make sure that our reading scores improve for next year. Our overall, we did have overall growth in math. Novice reduction was six tenths of a pointer, something like that. So, we really have used our math data this year to group kids. In the past, we've always had advanced classes, and we've had lower classes where we might have collaborative teachers, but this year, we kind of took the MAP data, and if you're in the middle, you're in the middle with like students. So, we think that's gonna really help teachers to be able to drill down into the curriculum and work with those kids, because they're all kind of at the same place. We're gonna, we've emphasized co-teaching in the low math classes, the lower math classes with the lower RITS. They're working very closely together, that has to help. And we have continued participation in the MDCs. I think the one challenge that we're facing this year, and we've got a lot of things in place for it, but our percentage of proficient distinguished in math and reading combined scores was 60% for regular ed kids. But when we look at students with disabilities, it's 11%, and with our ESL, LEP, whatever the newest three letters are for that group, it's 6%. So, we really have a wide range there, and so we have to work hard to get that up. We, that's created a focus school for us. So, we are digging deeper into the data. We've worked with our special ed teachers once a week. They're looking at data, trying to figure out new strategies and better think ways to work with their kids, to build relationships with them. One of the things we really want to do this year is encourage more independence with students, so that they are learning how to do the work themselves always, instead of having as much support as they've had in the past. We think that will help if they set their own goals and understand what they need to do. We have a little packet called My Success Plan that teachers are working with on those students, so that they know what their disability is, know what they're allowed to have as far as supports, and what they should be doing on their own. So, we think they, we're trying to disarm them with every tool possible, and then set goals for MAP, reasonable goals, things that they can achieve and feel good about, and then move on from there. We have peer tutors working in our ESL classroom. The district has provided a teacher there for four periods a day, every day. I think that's gonna help a lot with those students. We have an IA that works with them two days a week, and many of them are in our RTI group as well, so we're doing what we can to help them. They're hard workers, and we want them to succeed as much as we can. Excuse me, let me take a breath. Everybody in the building is working hard as we continue our focus that we've had, we had last year and this year, on the three components of quality instruction. We are still working on learning targets and making sure that they are focused on the work. Formative assessments are something they're still learning. They, a lot of teachers are really great at it, some need more help, but we work on that continually. With our CIA meetings that the middle school have, our consultants are working with all the administrators to get better at that, so that we can work with our teachers on engaging lessons and making sure that kids are engaged in class, using accountable talk. So, there again, the consultants come to the rescue for us and help us a lot. And then, that transfers to PLCs where the teachers are working on those things as well. For our Explorer, we have good scores. We're not where we want to be yet, but we feel like giving that, this Explorer test to seventh graders is really gonna help us. We have plans on how to use that seventh grade data, but for the eighth grade students, we are using reading passages that mirror the ACT. We have math problems that are similar to ACT problems that students are working on, and we're meeting with each eighth grade student to make sure they understand what their results mean and what they need to do to get better for the plan. I think meeting with those seventh graders to discuss their results when they come back is gonna have a huge impact. I think, sorry, when we talk about the program review, the way it was scored last year's a little different than this year, but we did increase our score percent of proficient standards met, but we also got the maximum points we could get to get all the points we could get for program review, which helped. We've talked about the combined reading and math results, and we know we didn't meet that delivery target, and we're gonna work on that, as well as the achievement gap. On the wellness plan, we have created a plan for wellness, and it's been relayed to everybody in the school, so that's an area we've got. We have a new PE teacher who's working diligently on making sure that's better. Closing, I want to thank you guys again. Thank you so much for providing those consultants for us. Thank you for the MAP tests and the data that it provides. I think that's the best way for us to grow, is to continue to look at data.
Thank you for having us. We want to start out with first, two points of pride. First of all, we did meet AMO this year. We received 65.6 points, and our goal was 62.7, so we remain, we actually did a reminder program every day. We have a sign, a campaign, that said, "4.2, you can do." We had it hung in every room and every hallway, and the 4.2 was what we needed to be proficient. We missed proficiency by 1.2 points, but we'll come up with another campaign this year, so we think that that had an impact on the students, and then they knew what we were shooting for. I'm happy to say that our second point of pride is our state percentile ranking. We moved from the 47th percentile to the 64th percentile. While we're happy about this, we know that there's still a lot of work that we have to do. We need to reach proficiency, and our goal is to do that next year. As we looked at our data, we realized there were things that in place last year that contributed to our scores. One of the biggest contributors was our math department. The scores in our math department increased overall by six points, for a total of 70.9. Our teachers worked really hard in many ways, and I have to say thanks for the consultant who also helped us along the way. We love our consultants. Professional development activities occurred last summer, and that was very helpful, including the springboard curriculum updates. They did supplemental materials and springboard strategies used in the math class. Our math teachers also participated in the monthly cadre meetings after school, and I can say that our math teachers were consistently there, and I think that had an effect on their instruction in the classroom. Our math teachers also received professional development for their MDC implementation. Besides the PD that they received, it was the ownership that they took with their scores in the math department. When the scores for the 2012 and 13 school year came out, the math department identified those students early. We got them signed up into ESS and RTI, and then if needed, we signed them up for the student assistance team. With the data, we realized that the number of students who are a year behind or more in math needed remediation, and we implemented Do the Math Now full-time, with one teacher responsible for the instruction and the data monitoring. I believe this is why there was a reduction in novice in every grade level for math. All of our teachers, including math, also held a campaign to challenge, in a positive way, students to improve their scores. We posted and celebrated the students scoring proficient and distinguished. We worked with students to get MAP goals and MAP growth, and their, set their goals. We used MAP growth data to celebrate students who were growing, which increased student skills and confidence, so that they would do better on the K-Prep in the spring. I feel this and the instructional strategies are why our proficient and distinguished scores increased so much. In sixth grade, I'm happy to say that our proficient and distinguished percentage increased by 16.8%, and in eighth grade, our proficient and distinguished increased by 11%, so I'm happy. I attribute our increase in proficient and distinguished scores in science to the hands-on activities, the training to use springboard strategies in the science classroom, reading and questioning strategies in the classroom, and our STEM class. Thank you to our science consultant who helped us implement some of those things. Our overall science proficient and distinguished totals increased by 6.9%. We increased the percent of students in our gap group scoring proficient and distinguished by 13.6%. And then, our Explorer scores in science, students reaching benchmark, we increased that by 4.8%. So, our science overall has done some positive things. Other strategies that I feel had an effect on our scores were the monthly live scoring that our sixth grade students received from their ELA teachers. And we also implemented a writing non-negotiable across our building, so that every student wrote incomplete sentences and had good writing practices. We did see an increase in the proficient and distinguished scores in sixth grade, and we need to continue that for our seventh and eighth grade. So, even with those strategies last year, we knew that we continued, we needed to do some things differently this year, so we kept, we're gonna keep doing those things, and at the beginning of this school year, we added other things we thought would help. This summer, the consultants once again provided professional development for all of our teachers in each of the content areas. I feel this is very effective in providing resources and instructional strategies to our teachers. I feel on, that, on a side note, I also feel like the monthly CIA meetings that administrators receive are very, very beneficial. I want to keep those in place. I hope they will continue. But back to our school, last year, when we did put in place the one teacher teaching the Do the Math Now, we took that same philosophy and put it in place for our Read 180 teacher. We have one teacher who is doing the Read 180 and monitoring the progress for them, and that's been very beneficial. We also, when we returned to school, we provided all teachers with instruction in using text effectively in their classrooms. And during the first quarter, the focus of our RTI groups was informational reading using those text strategies. We plan to keep using the MAP data and analyzing that MAP data every time we take it, and from the MAP data, we are creating flexible RTI groups, and we have some math RTI groups and some language arts RTI groups. In both reading and math, we knew there were students struggling to keep up with the rigorous springboard curriculum, so we developed a class called the Springboard 40. And the students who qualify for this class, it's kind of a transition class, they were below the 40th percentile on MAP, they were not low enough in reading to be in the 180, but not, still struggling with the springboard curriculum. So, we put them in the Springboard 40 as a transition to move forward, and it's also a good place to take students after they leave 180 before they go to springboard. We again, plan to give the seventh and eighth grade students the Explorer test. When we get the results, we're gonna do an item analysis, and then determine remediation needs for the students who are not reaching benchmark. We also updated our Prep ELA classes for the Prep students, and we've increased their reading for them, and we are also doing things at a higher pace, a faster pace, to give them the skills they need. In effort to improve our program review, we added two classes this year to our encore elective rotation. We implemented a French class, and we implemented a careers class. This summer, we originally looked for a Spanish teacher, but they were in high demand, and then we advertised for French, and we found a wonderful teacher. If you haven't seen it, you can come in and see that. The students are, were hesitant about the French at first, because it was new to them, and now they really enjoy it. The other class that we added was a careers class, which really helps our students get an exposure to what careers are out there for the different content areas, and all the students can rotate through the career classes and the French class. Now, with the analysis of this year's scores, we know that we have to do things different. We are not happy with everything that's going on. We know that we have to move forward. Our overall student growth total decreased, and our reading achievement totals stayed the same, so we're not happy about that. In order to improve, we must continue to implement the Read 180 and the System 44 with fidelity. We have to monitor those students. We have to react to the students who are not making progress. We're working with our consultants to find other resources for when the student is not making progress in that Read 180 class. We also want our teachers and expect our teachers to implement rigorous text and higher-level reading passages in their classes, and we're monitoring this through our lesson plan check off we're doing every week, so that's something we've taken on that's important to us. We will continue to develop targeted RTI groups to include reading passages at all levels, including Prep and Prep Plus classes. To do this, we identified specific skills that students are missing, and we targeted the learning. So, we looked at each student, what are they missing, what do we need to target, and that's how we developed our RTI groups. So, we're gonna do that throughout this school year. We call those flexible, because we want to change them when necessary. For our GT students, we are identifying skills that they need to grow from where they are, not only enrichment, but also opportunities to grow in reading and math skills. We need to continue to provide training that focuses on differentiated instruction, we know that within the classroom, and reacting to the text. Our consultants are meeting regularly with us to accomplish it. Other areas that we need to, that we know we needed to do different was, in the area of our disability students, we are a focus group in social studies, writing, and math. I'm sorry, social studies, writing, and reading, and it's not acceptable. Our first piece of business was to meet with the special ed director and our consultant, and come up with a, let's do some brainstorming, what is going on, what are we not doing that other schools are doing, and what do we need to keep in place that's working. We determined that, at this meeting, we are doing a lot of reacting to the classroom teachers and reacting to assignments and reacting to our kids, instead of being proactive and getting that instructional piece ahead of, ahead of it, instead of behind it. So, now, we are working towards our special ed teachers, working side-by-side with our classroom teachers, getting some co-teaching back in place. We're gonna go back through and train some of our teachers who've not had co-teaching. We need to get that piece so that we're ahead of it, and we're getting that specially-designed instruction. The other, the other thing we have to do is we have to monitor those special ed students, how they're doing, what they're doing in science class, in social studies class, in writing. We are revisiting those students each week, just to know how they're doing and how we need to react to their progress. We're gonna monitor them weekly and different, and through RTI and ESS, so if they need additional skills, we're gonna put them in the RTI and then ESS. In our overall writing scores, we stayed even, but again, we had increases in our sixth grade by 10%, and what they did was the live scoring and the on-demand practice, so we're implementing that both in the seventh and eighth grade, so that we can get practice in our writing and improve our writing scores. And we're gonna monitor that through our lesson plans and classroom observations. In January, we are going to do a boot camp for our Prep and Prep Plus, Prep and Prep Plus students who maybe scored proficient on their writing on-demand, and we're going to do the boot camp, so that we move them to distinguished. If they are a gifted student, then we want them to have the tools to write appropriately, so we're gonna do a boot camp in January. In December, we're doing a boot camp for our novice students. We want to move their writing from novice to apprentice, and our consultants are gonna help do that, so we've identified the students. In order for our students to become better writers, we can only, we don't want to only concentrate on the on-demand, we also want to concentrate on the constructive responses. And so, what we are going to do is we are showing our teachers how to model for the students, showing them good pieces, showing them the pieces that need improvement, so our students can learn, not just by writing their own, but looking and analyzing the other writing pieces. Our overall score in Explorer decreased, and we're not happy about that. Yes, we are still gonna give our seventh grade students the Explorer test and do some item analysis, but we're gonna take it a step farther, and we're gonna make sure that we are doing the same type of questions, the ACT type of questions, in the classroom. And the teachers are gonna receive training in writing those ACT questions. And in closing, we don't want to be the lowest performing middle school. We want to move forward. We had a couple areas of really strong gain, and we were able to identify what they did. And so, in order to help me stay focused, I've developed a 30, 60, 90-day plan. It helps me keep focus on what learning and monitoring of the necessary items to grow for our building. The areas that I've concentrated on are the quality instructional pieces, the learning targets, the instructional strategies, the formative assessments. We are monitoring that by doing classroom walks, and we want to remediate the skills deficits in reading and math, identifying those students, making sure that we target them, and then also improving our writing for all. So, those are the three big goals on the 30, 60, 90-day plan. We have a lot of hard work to do. We know that, we know that.
Well, we are so excited to be here and to share some of the great things going on at Woodland Middle School. First, we are thrilled to be labeled as a proficient school. So excited, I should give a woo-hoo for it, since that's what I'm known for. And it's all because, I know, and it's all because of our teachers. We have the best staff in the nation. I mean, they really believe they're family, they're committed, and our students, who are committed to coming in every day and learning and growing. Even more exciting than being proficient is the fact that we're progressing, because it shows that we're moving in the right direction. We hit our annual measurable objective set by the state for the second year in a row, which just reaffirms that we're moving in the right direction. And also, because of the exceptional hard work of our science teachers and our special education teachers, we're no longer a focus school. They were able to close the gap with those students, so we are just a proficient and progressing school, which is so exciting for us. During the 2013-2014 school year, there are some things that we committed to as a school, which really contributed to us moving from the 63rd percentile to the 79th percentile of all schools in Kentucky. We contribute this to, first, a laser-light focus on data. Last year, all we talked about was data. We talked about with students. We used data to group. We used our MAP data, we used our K-Prep data, and teachers, it made teachers more reflective. They reflected on what they were, they were able to give proof about why this student, instead of, "I think this is what's happening." They were able to say, "Yes, I know for a fact they're growing, because it shows in their MAP data." We also created a co-taught math class that was taught by two certified math teachers, and they took every student who was below the 30th percentile on math MAP, and with the goal of, you've got a year, you've got to get these ready, kids ready, to go to Algebra I as ninth graders. And we had a lot of success from that class. 71% of those students showed growth, and this was a class, it was a group of students. None of them scored proficient or distinguished on the math portion as seventh graders, and several moved into the proficient category, several moved, the majority moved out of novice into apprentice, which was a great gains for that. We use our MAP RIT scores to goal-set with all our students. They actually, in their planner, they have a chart where they chart it in the fall, and then the winter and the spring, so they can actually see their growth, in addition to the individual conversations that they have with their teachers. We also, teachers use those RIT scores to flexibly group students, and we are continuing to address the needs of really our struggling readers through System 44 and Read 180. And I'm gonna get into some more about our writing, our negotiables, but that was something also that we did. something also that we did schoolwide that we feel not only impacted our writing scores, but also just across the board. So we're very excited about that. The next thing we're really excited about is that we increased the number of students scoring proficient or distinguished on K-Prep and writing. We went from 31.2%, which is awful, in 2013 to 50.8% in 2014. So we're so proud of that. As everyone knows, writing is one of those, to be college and career ready, you've got to be able to write. And our staff really believes this is an essential skill and they balled into it. So over the last summer, our language arts teachers got together, this was completely led by them, and developed writing non-negotiables. We introduced it to the staff at the very beginning of school and then continued to follow up, talk about writing non-negotiables. You could pretty much walk up to any student in Woodland and say, so what's one of the writing non-negotiables? And they would be able to tell you. And they buy into it and they know that if they don't follow that, they're going to be, their work is going to be handed back to them. And it's just basic things like writing and complete sentences and using sentence stems, things like that. Also, our encore elective teachers wanted to be involved in this writing movement too. So they instituted Write About It Wednesday. So every Wednesday, the first 10 minutes of the elective class was spent on writing. And it was a topic that really helped our program review. It was something that was related to fine arts or careers and they developed it themselves, then would analyze it and do like little mini writing lessons. So it was really good to have our encore elective teachers involved in that. And then every certified staff member was trained in the state on-demand writing, writing rubric, including me and Mr. Campbell, our guidance counselors. And then every student participated in a schoolwide on-demand writing. And then those writings were divided up among every certified staff member in the school. We all graded them, we all graded like 10 to 12. Then we got together and talked about what were the similarities we saw in those writings, what were things that we really needed to address as a school, and then developed a game plan to address those things. So we're pumped about our writing scores. And then we're also excited about the improvement that we showed in math, that 44.7% or number scoring proficient or distinguished in math moved from 44.7% to 51.2%. We attribute part of that to the co-taught math class that I talked about earlier, but also our math interventions and extensions during RTI that we were able to do. Our teachers were able to not only address our struggling students, but also the needs of our high-performing students and were able to move them to the next level. With our laser light focus on data, every content area created a WIG, if you're familiar with Stephen Covey, it's a wildly important goal. And they each created that and that was what they were shooting for. And of course, math teachers, they love their numbers. And they decided as a content area that a weakness for all students, including your high-performing students, was fluency. And so they developed a fluency test and then strategies that they did pretty much almost every day to improve fluency. And so we attribute that to, to the success that we saw with the increase in proficient and distinguished. And then finally, we, the percentage of our students who met their Explorer benchmarks increased in every area. We attribute that to seventh graders taking Explorer, just that exposure to the tests. It's really, with that time test, it's really important for the, the first exposure not to be as eighth graders to that exposure, but also teachers taking the information from that test and addressing the areas of improvement with students and across the curriculum. And then using those Explorer tests to goal set and then revisiting those goals that they set seventh graders as eighth graders before they take the test. And though they're eighth grade teachers, using that information from the seventh grade Explorer test at the beginning of school, as they're getting into the swing of things before we take Explorer in the fall, to revisit some of those areas of improvement. And then this year, some of the things we're going to continue to do to positively impact students are all the things I just talked about. We're going to continue with our laser light focus. We're going to continue with the writing non-negotiables, exploring seventh grade and using MAP to really target our instruction. But in addition, we changed our RTI around and we don't have a lot of math interventions and we are very concerned that we have a lot of students who are below the benchmark on MAP for math. So we were able to take small groups of students and put them with a math teacher. And that math teacher is able to front-load concepts and skills that they need to be successful in springboard math. So we're hoping that extra 25 minutes is really going to pay off in the end with supporting the students. But then something that came out of that was our math teachers were like, what about our advanced students? We were able to really push them. So the last six weeks, we're going to put all our advanced students with their math teachers so they can use that 25 minutes to really push students. So we're excited about that. Because it's important to have, if you're trying to increase math proficiency, to have a math teacher working with them. So we're excited. We also know that we have some areas of improvement because we want to be distinguished, that's our goal. So areas of improvement. We really feel we need to address the fact that we had a drop in the number of students scoring proficient or distinguished in reading. And it dropped by 8.8%, which is a pretty large drop. So our plan to address this is to continue with the springboard implementation. It's rigorous, it's challenging to students, but we also need to do a better job with our MAP data and not just use the RIT score, but also use the skill scores that come with it when we're flexibly grouping students to address, to address student deficiencies. And then really to sit back and reflect on what we did last year and how we can make it better to help with reading. And then continuing to address the needs of our struggling readers through System 44 and Read 180. And also, because that was a real disappointment to me, is the number of students who didn't grow in Read 180 that I expected to see tremendous growth and it didn't happen. So I feel like I need to really provide better leadership by meeting with those students and also doing a better job working with the collaborative teachers and interventionists with Read 180. And then we really need to address the needs of our gap students, particularly those living in poverty and our special education students. We're still really, really far away from the target set by the district, not by the district, by the state with our students in poverty. And one of the things is doing some job embedded professional development focused on the needs of students in poverty and what they need. And also bringing our family resource, Resource Youth Service, excuse me, Service Center Coordinator and to work with parents on why education is important and what they can do to support their child academically, because that's an area that we've neglected. And then really identifying at-risk students and providing additional interventions for them. And then we also need to continue working with our special education students, with our students with disabilities. They're underperforming with the number scoring proficient distinguished in all tested areas. And so really increasing that collaboration among special education and regular, regular education teachers and really working on what are those high-impact strategies that are going to help those students succeed. And then having our special education teachers share their progress monitoring data with content area teachers so they're familiar with what they're working on. And then support and continue training instructional aides who are working with our special education teachers. And then focus on best practices for the co-teaching model. And then continue, continue to work with our special education teachers with, with improving their content knowledge so they feel more comfortable in the co-teaching model. But we're very excited about the things that are going on at Woodland. Every teacher and adult in our building is committed to seeing students grow, to seeing them learn, and we're excited about the things that are going to happen in the future.
First, we do want to thank you for the opportunity to be here to share with you the progress that we had over the past year. I do have a new administrative assistant this year, Denise Miani, so she's doing a fabulous job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Some points of pride that we had this year for Twin Offal Middle School is that we were classified as a proficient and progressing school by scoring in the 89th percentile. We were really excited about that, but we were also a little disappointed. Our main goal was to be distinguished. We didn't get that. We missed about four tenths of a point. So we, however, our staff did celebrate that. They were very excited, our community, our students were very, were just very satisfied with those results, but we know that we still have some growth to go. We still know that we have some work to do. We met our growth goal for our gap groups in special education and free and reduced lunch, allowing for Twin Offal not to be a focus school. We did a really good job focusing on our, our gap group, special education, free and reduced, really looking at the individual student, seeing what their needs were, seeing what their deficits were in each area and making sure that we had the tools and resources in place regardless of whatever it was, to make sure that they were successful and they had what they needed to move on to that next level. Our reading and math students met typical growth at 66% for the entire student population. So the points of pride to Twin Offal Middle School, overall, they had a really good school year. Once again, we have a very dedicated staff. I give all the credit to them. They, they make no excuses. They pretty much adopt each individual child. They look at what they need and they just put in place what they need to take that student or their students to the next level. In the 2013, 14 school year, what did Twin Offal Middle School implement that positively impacted student learning? As our school report card indicates, our reading achievement was 59.8, proficient distinguished to state average, was 53.2 and 57.8, reaching reading and typical growth. Some of the things that we implemented to help that was Read 180, System 44, Expert 21. And not only having those programs, but really monitoring the student progress, looking at the data almost on a weekly basis. We noticed a student was struggling, we would take them down a level or if we knew, or if we noticed like a student was doing really well, we would take them to the next level. So it was continuous monitoring of data. I think one of the things that really also set us apart is how we focus on RTI. It's a schoolwide RTI. Everyone's involved, all the con, all the core content teachers, all the exploratory teachers. And it's a continual, really looking at the students, continuously monitoring the data, grouping, regrouping. So from day one until the end of the school year, our teachers are really looking at the individual students and seeing what they need. We really look at MAP testing. We really focus on that. We set student growth goals. Our students have agendas and inside those agendas, I think as Woodland mentioned earlier, we also have our students set realistic goals, something that they know that they can achieve, but yet it will also help them take it to the next level. And we do that three times a year. Our teachers actively participate and let district-level springboard PLCs and PDs. And our teachers are so hungry and so eager to improve. Anything that's new, anything that they can do to help improve the instructional strategies within their classroom, they are all about it. Our students are scheduled based on data and the data that we look at are the MAP and K-Prep. And we use this to make sure that the students are in the correct classes and we make changes accordingly to how they're progressing throughout the year. So once we have a student in place, say in August, that doesn't necessarily mean that that student will end in that same class. You know, throughout the year, looking at MAP, Explorer, K-Prep, we'll monitor student progress. And if we see that they need to be moved or, you know, there's a deficiency somewhere, we will move that child. Another big thing that we do that really puts the intentional focus on our students is we have individual MAP meetings with our teachers. By meeting with the teachers, they know that they have to, when they come and meet with us, they have to know the levels of all their students. That also gives them some ownership, like, okay, like, these are my kids, I know where they're at, I know their present levels, I know where I want them to get there, or I know where I want them to be. And so with having that in inside, they know that there's a road or there's a map that they have to put in place to get that student to the next level. Also, looking at some of the things that we implemented were daily bell ringers, exit slip, formative assessment, students and teachers collaborating to help reach their own MAP goal. And something also as an administrative team that we do, we implemented administrative frenzies. We have a lot of great kids, a lot of great kids. And sometimes, you know, they're the average kids, they're not necessarily all A's, they might be a B or C student, but from a social standpoint, they come to school every day, they do all of their work, they go above and beyond to help other students. And we try to recognize those students by getting teacher recommendations and we'll meet with them on a quarterly basis and announce, you know, what they're being recommended for and by the teacher. Looking at our math achievement, which was a 59.2 proficient distinguished to state average was a 44.4, 44.8 and a 74.2% reaching math typical growth. Our students, once again, for math, are scheduled based on data and that data is MAP and K-Prep. We have, once again, we have individual MAP meetings with individual teachers to discuss student progress. We've added a Math 180 class for a Tier 2 intervention and a Math exploratory for a Tier 3. And once again, with that, we are constantly looking at our students. Consultants do an amazing job coming in. They'll sit down with us and they'll go through entire class rosters to see where the students started, see where they're currently at. They also help us with scheduling. They'll give us great recommendations on what they, on what they think the students need. The students and teachers collaborate also for math to help set their own math goals. And for our science achievement, which was a 74.8 proficient distinguished to state average was a 64.2. Some of the things that we implemented, common assessments, hands-on lab activities, MAP reading with individual teachers to monitor and access student data, bell ringers and exit slips and formative assessments. Beginning in August 2014, what did Twin Offal Middle School implement that is believed to positively impact student learning? Something we did a little different this year, we also created a science elective that we call an Intro to Engineering to help support the science content. One of the things that we noticed, we had a lot of supports for reading and math, but two areas that we were sort of lacking was our science and our social studies. So with that, we added a nine-week elective class. Hopefully, by the end of the year, all of our, or at least three-fourths of our students will have had the opportunity to be in that class. And this is expected to close the gaps and raise our science K-Prep achievement and growth. And it's also expected to raise our Explorer test scores for the following year. Our seventh graders will take the Explorer test. And once again, this is expected to help raise our test scores for the eighth graders. We will use the results to identify instructional needs for individual growth and whole group needs. And data will equip us and the data that we use with our seventh graders, we will use that information to help group and regroup students according to their academic performance. And also, once our seventh grade students take the Explorer test, we will use that to help monitor and group our RTI students for the spring semester. The other thing that, the other class that we added, we added global issues and that was to help our social study scores by students using context clues and learning more about primary and secondary sources. Some of the skills that were covered, reading for understanding, interpretation, reflection, responding and thinking critically. And hopefully, this is one of the things that will help continue to improve our social study scores. Based on our analysis of the school report card data with achievement, gap, growth and college and career readiness and for our graduation rate, what new strategies must we implement to address the needs of our students? We really do have an amazing staff and I cannot say enough about them. When we come to our meetings, it's sort of no holds bar. Regardless of the situation, we will put everything on the table to focus on our students. It's not easy. It'd be easy to just keep doing the status quo and go on. But when we're in our PLC meetings, we are constantly looking at data. We're constantly seeing where we need to move students. What can we do as an administrative team to help be supportive, provide more resources? And one of the things about our PLC meetings, as mentioned earlier, is our teachers really do take ownership of the students. They're willing to come in early, stay late. They're always wanting to improve. So, we have some really awesome meetings. And during those meetings, some of the things that we look at, as far as data, is the K-Prep. We look at Explorer data. Can't say enough about the map data, especially getting to use that three times a year, starting in August. We'll have our second round in December, and then our final, our third window will be in April. And with that, the information that we gather from the individual students is totally invaluable. I mean, so valuable. It allows, it allows us to see a continual growth of each student throughout the year. Something also that we're wanting to implement are peer-review videos. This has sort of taken some time. We're wanting to identify our stronger teachers and come in their classes, videotape it. And that's a way that we have the tools and resources on hand to where, when we do our PPR walks, or if we're walking in a classroom and we notice that a teacher sort of could improve instructionally, we will have that in place. We'll be able to go show our own people and what we expect. Sixteen point four percent novice in reading achievement. Our content teachers across all three grades, we meet and focus on what the needs are of our students and if there are any gaps within the curriculum. Some of the things that we've implemented were Expert twenty-one, System forty-four, Read one-eighty. And we will continue to monitor student data and make individual placement changes based on data. At ten point eight percent novice in math achievement, we have our content teachers across all three grades to meet and focus on what our students need and to see if there are any gap groups within the curriculum. Special education, math, and reading, thirty-seven point three proficient distinguished. Data meeting, data meetings to monitor the progress, deficiency, and make changes for individual students. Can't really say enough about our special ed department. We meet weekly, all three grades, our three units. And we really focus on, you know, our students. They take so much ownership in their students. They take so much pride in that group of students. And they are constantly pushing those students to get better, to take it to the next level. And, you know, regardless of whatever handicap they may have, they make no excuses. They want what's best for those kids. And they are constantly coming in every day, going above and beyond their call to ensure success.